Welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting for the Town of Acton, Maine for August 14th, 2018. First item is to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda as written.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor? All opposed? Minutes of the last meeting?
I move that we approve the minutes of the last meeting.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the last meeting. Any discussion?
Actually, Kim wasn't present.
True, so I should second that.
Thank you.
Okay, you second that.
You abstain?
I'll abstain.
Okay. Call for a vote. All in favor? All opposed? Any abstentions?
One.
Any abstentions?
One.
I guess so.
Okay, thank you.
We don't want to hold you to anything if you weren't here, so...
That's right.
Okay, first time we've ever done this.
Department heads and committee chair updates. None? Nope. Okay. Old business, road association funds.
Elise?
Okay, I sat with Arnie Murray last week and I believe except that I did find an edit of my own to add a word in. I put it out there for review by the road committee and you guys as well. And I think I only heard back from Arnie asking to add one more link. So, I don't know if you want to have the lawyers look at it?
That's your call.
I feel like I've included everything...
It's just the application, right?
Yeah.
So where does it go from here? So, the board approves it, the road committee, we're ready to start advertising it?
Yeah, unless you...
Do you have a timeline on how long they're going to be available for, or is it just open all year, or what direction are you going with that?
Well, I think Arnie wanted to talk with the road committee and to discuss maybe putting a cap on how much each road would get, or...
Do they have a meeting coming up where we can present them with the final draft and maybe they can look at it?
Do you know if there's a meeting scheduled?
We haven't scheduled one yet. We will schedule one very soon.
Okay.
We got the RSMS done, so we're ready to make a report back to you when we're completed it.
Okay.
And we'll deal with that, too.
So soon, there'll be a meeting?
We'll hold until they meet.
Yeah.
Sounds good. Anything else on that?
No.
Property maintenance survey.
Two weeks and counting.
Okay. Sounds good. How many have you gotten, do you know?
Probably only about 250 or so.
Good.
We've now, you know, in the beginning, we were asking every single resident. A lot of them have been honest about, you know, they got it on voting day. Some people are just not interested in filling it out.
Yep. Sounds all right. Okay. Lincoln School.
So I think we've talked to all parties.
We have. We have.
It was nice that we agreed.
Yes. Yeah, so the stoves that are down there, the gas stoves, all parties seem to agree that they do not belong to the town. The person who owns them can do with what they want with them. The desks are still kind of up in the air, but not 100 percent. Some of them are owned by...
Hannah.
Hannah?
One.
So, one. And I believe some were given to the school by Ted Kreizak, so, from his school. So, the stoves were the only thing that were in question anyway, so I'm not going to go any further with it. And with the approval of you two, I guess we can tell them they can deal on the stoves?
Yep, I agree.
I do, too.
Good. Yep. So, I told the gentleman I was calling tonight after the meeting. I'd have a decision for him then after we spoke, so. So I'll do that. And I think they're planning on picking them up.
Saturday.
Saturday or Sunday. Yep. So, good. Okay. New business, tax rate.
So for the last two weeks, we've talked about the tax rate. And we, last week, went through a breakdown of where everything was at, the auditor and the assessor and the treasurer's recommendation. So all of the papers are prepared for the $12.05 mill rate that you discussed last week. So we just need some signatures and a motion to actually commit taxes at that rate.
Okay. The auditors are in right now doing their work? Is that correct?
Yes, they're doing their 1718.
Okay. They still don't have any numbers for us as far as what's in the undesignated?
No, but Michelle is moving forward based on the policy that she presented to you last week.
Okay. Okay. And the policy states we need X amount of dollars?
Right.
She's confident that that's in there?
She's confident, oh yeah, that's definitely in there. That plus the three months of, you know. But if you remember last week, I mean, the increase is based on that breakdown. I think it was pretty self-explanatory based on what the voters approved, so...
Yep. 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 So, yeah, we had discussed this last week. The new tax rate will be... I always have a hard time finding it on these.
1205.
1205. Yep.
1205.
And that's a 15 cent increase. Okay. So do I have a motion?
I move that we sign the tax commitment for 2018, 2019 at $12.05.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to approve the new tax rate at $12.05 for the upcoming year. Any further discussion?
No.
All for a vote? All in favor? All opposed? Two places, Jen, or just one?
Yeah, I think there's at least two.
Okay. You want to start on that one?
So just keep in mind that it will take about three weeks to get the tax bills out. We outsourced them to an outside company, so...
Take your time.
It takes a little bit of time. Take your time. But we can start collecting effectively tomorrow.
Exactly.
There's actually, I'm sorry, the assessor's certificate has to be signed twice on that.
Oh, on the back.
That tells me that I need to collect the $5 million, unless you don't want to sign that.
Oh, by all means, we do.
Yeah, sorry, there's a back on that.
So, both of these?
Yep. And you can read it. It just breaks down the number of the total parcels and total amount of tax to be collected.
Okay, here we go. You want me to read it?
Don't have to.
Okay. It's hot in here.
I don't know if I'll get it on the...
Two places.
Someday, I'm just going to bring a hand stamp in and just...
All right, it's late.
Okay. Yes, sir?
Yes, sir.
Beautiful. Warrant and finance.
Last week, with regret, you accepted the resignation of Mr. Will Williams from the warrant and finance pursuant to the ordinance adopted by the voters in Acton on April 5th of 2011. There's a section regarding vacancies. It says, "The openings of a committee position due to a member resignation or any other reason other than term expiration shall be filled in the following manner. If a standing member position is vacant, an alternate member elected with the same term expiration date shall assume the vacant standing member position for the remainder of the vacated term, thus leaving an alternate member position vacant. If any member position is vacant and cannot be filled as described above, a temporary member shall be appointed by the board of selectmen to serve the next regular town meeting." So, Mr. Williams' term expired, was due to expire June of 2019, and you have no alternates that are expiring in June of 2019. Therefore, you need to open it up to accepting names and decide, well, you need to open it up to accept names based on the ordinance.
Right.
And I will tell you that an alternate has reached out to me, and it's kind of a, you know, a gray area in regards to putting their name forward as a temporary, as a permanent member. I mean, do they have to actually resign before they can really be available for the position? But then what happens if they're not the chosen one? Then they've lost it. Can they put their name forward and keep the other position until you make a decision? So, I'm looking for some direction from the board.
Well, I mean, I'd assume that you would have to be free and clear in order to run for it, to put your name in.
Okay.
That would be my thought. I mean, if that person, I don't know who it is, well, I've been told, so if that person does put in for it, they resign being the alternate, and they don't get it, then I guess they can put back in for being the alternate and then get it again. So, that would be my thought anyway, just like anyone else can put in for it, so...
Can also take all the names into consideration and then, you know, and then decide from there.
I'm going to clear up all what I was...
What do we got here? Two copies. Let's see. "To my concern, I hereby resign my two-year alternate appointment on the warrant and finance committee in order to apply for the one-year appointment replacing Dr. Williams, who is a regular member of this committee. Sincerely, Lois Mischu." Okay.
All right.
What do you want to do with the resignation?
Lois, you understand, I mean, are you resigning whether you get the position or not? I mean, that, well, hold on. I mean, there's two separate entities. I mean, if you want to resign your position, then you need to resign your position, period.
No, I'm resigning it knowing that I'm going to put in the application for the first one.
Knowing that you may not be the choice.
That I may not get it, and so on and so forth. The other thing was, is that the next time I'm going to make a suggestion, the next time there's two alternates up for a position, because this is what's going on right now, it's one year, it should have been a one-year alternate and a two-year alternate, not two years for both alternates.
But that's not something that the board of selectmen can change.
Right. But this needs to be changed or revamped. This is what I was getting to. In other words, this year...
No, we understand. We understand. But the board is governed by that ordinance unless they...
Right.
But the problem with this warrant and finance ordinance is this has to be changed now. It can only be changed at an annual town meeting.
Right.
Based on the written, based on the information in it. So, they decide to move it forward to next June, the voters can make a decision to change it, and then it won't be until the following June if they even agree to change the terms.
But the thing is, it won't really change. Whoever fills in this position, and you do the alternate for that position next time, it won't change. The only time it changes is when you have two openings as an alternate. Because, think about it, okay? Say, okay, say I'm removing myself out of it.
Everybody on the warrant and finance has different terms.
Carol's going to be the one-year term left. Whoever gets the alternate position in June, if that's what it goes through at, will be the two years. So it should keep going. The only reason it didn't keep going is because you had two positions open at that moment. In other words, you had two people looking for two-year positions instead of a one-year and a two-year. You should have had, normally it would have worked. It would have been one year, one year, one year. But unfortunately, this is one exemption. It ain't going to work.
Okay. So then we should accept this resignation from Lois.
I would just make sure that it's clear that she wants to make the resignation, I mean, she wants to make the resignation, period.
Yeah, it's clear.
You sure?
Yes.
Even if maybe, okay, all right.
It's clear. But just give me a, I meant, I meant, it's not an alternate, it's three years now. This is just giving time off.
Okay, all right.
All right, so I guess we're essentially adding under new business, the, so you've got two different, we'll add the resignation under new business if that's okay with you.
Sure.
Still need a motion on accepting...
I need a motion on accepting the resignation.
No, we're still on B, so needing a motion to accept openings or names for the person interested in the...
Yes.
Yeah, how long do we...
Generally, you go a good two weeks.
Yeah, do you want to go till the end of August?
Sure.
What does that give us for, just a...
Couple of weeks.
Till September 1st or something? That's pretty close.
We'll look at your next meeting date. So your meeting on the September 4th, so we'll do tell, no later than noon time on the 4th?
Sure.
Sounds good.
Yep, that sounds perfect.
So anyone interested in serving on the warrant and finance until June 30th of 2019, which is the remainder of Mr. Williams' term, needs to submit their name to me no later than 12:00 noon on Tuesday, September 4th.
Okay. I just put the resignation under E.
Okay.
Handle it down there. Okay, liquor license, our liquor application.
So Goat Hill Farm Party, do you remember this? Megan is having her little shing ding.
Yes.
They are, they have the liability insurance and they have a caterer coming in to sell their cider. So it's just a one-day liquor license application.
Yep. We've done this before for weddings at different locations.
I was going to say, are they doing weddings at all up there?
Well, if they're doing weddings, they'd have to come before you.
Right.
This is town property. So as of now, no one's asked.
Okay. You haven't done anything yet. I just didn't know.
This is just more of an open house for Goat Hill and show everything that they've done.
Just somebody had asked, and I didn't know if that was something they would be trying to do.
I mean, I don't know what the board, I mean, would you support that?
I don't see why we wouldn't.
I would. That would be a nice place to get married.
So the application is under the Maine Farmland Trust. And that's where I need to signature.
Cool. Okay, application for a liquor license. This is a one-day liquor license?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Correct.
From Maine Farmland Trust. They're actually out of Belfast, Maine, and it's for Goat Hill down on the H Road. What is the wishes?
I move that we approve the liquor license for September 12th for Maine Farmland Trust.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to approve the liquor license for Maine Farmland Trust. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor? All opposed?
you'll come and join in.
Was the date the 12th?
The 12th, starting, it's from 4:00 to 7:00.
Okay, Westshore Drive.
So it's come to the town's attention that some miscommunication between the town's council and the board of selectmen, code enforcement, put myself in that category as well. The Town of Acton does not have the authority to put stipulations on another town subdivision plans. They do have the authority to put a gate across the end of Westshore Drive, possibly, and possibly do some issue, put some stipulations on the road itself. But the stipulations that were made at the July 24th meeting, forcing or encouraging or nicely asking the developer/surveyor slash property owner to do A, B, and C, and to go back and get them filed, really shouldn't have been done. We just, we overstepped our boundaries. We've had, it was, you know, it was, it was meant to be a neighborly, a neighborly piece, like, you know, we won't pursue the road, we won't, you know, have any concerns, if maybe you could put these on there to kind of appease our Westshore Drive residents as well. The timeline really got away from, away from the Town of Acton. The, you know, this public hearing started back in February. The property owner and everybody has done due diligence. It was approved in Chapley in May, and after additional council review with the board today, that's where it stands. So, you've got a couple of options. You can rescind your motion on July 24th and rescind the letter that we gave to the Chapley Planning Board and the surveyor, or you can instruct me to continue looking into the possibility of gating off the end of Westshore Drive so that no access would be allowed in there to those one or two properties. And again, I'm not an attorney. We haven't asked if we can legally do that, but it's been suggested that that could be done. Thoughts?
Well, my thoughts are, I don't see us, well, personally, I don't see us putting a gate across. There's a number of, every town has a, has a road that crosses from their town to another town, and there's houses on it. So I don't see that as being an option. I don't find that a good thing to do to Chapley. So, I mean, my opinion is to rescind the letter, and the property, the developers know how we feel.
So just for, sorry, just for clarity, so Selectman Walsh called for a vote, Selectman Walsh abstained from the vote due to a conflict, so...
And he's still going to abstain from this one.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're going in that same direction.
Oh, yeah. No, I'm still going to abstain.
Miller made the motion to allow the subdivision with the conditions, and it was seconded.
Yep.
So, one of the...
I feel like we tried our, you know, we, we tried to do what we thought was right. I, you know, we're going to, I feel like we need to rescind, too. I don't feel like we're going to go and put a gate up, but, you know...
I make a motion to rescind the request. Looking at the timeline, you know, it was a lesson learned. We should have responded sooner than...
Well, and we were notified in February.
Yep.
You know, there were many departments and towns, the butters were notified. We were notified. That went to the board, that went, you know, it didn't turn into anything because we weren't hearing of anything, you know, and it looked, you know, so...
Yep.
But again, it's, and if it, you know, puts any more, makes you feel, because anybody with concerns feel any better, you know, the survey, the developers have reiterated that they really feel like only two houses, you know, are really ever going to be able to go out there, you know. And I think that Mr. Stanley used the words today, unless they put a $300,000 bridge in there, and based on the current aquifers, it was almost impossible anyway.
Right.
So, it should be to a minimal, but, you know, you just, we just can't put the stipulations on Chapley's subdivision.
It was an attempt at asking them to be a, you know, a nice neighbor.
And I think that, and, I mean, and I think, you know, Chapley would have considered those had we done it a lot earlier in the process.
To be earlier.
But, you know, they had the public hearing, they wait, they have to wait 60 days based on their ordinance, and then they approve it. It gets filed at the registry, you know, they're on to other subdivisions. The next thing they know, they get a letter from Acton saying...
Right.
So they probably would have taken it a little, you know...
If it was sooner.
Different way. So we...
And I think we would have been more diligent if it was a 10, 15, 20 lot subdivision.
Or if you would have heard concerns immediately.
Right, yeah.
Right, if we had heard more concerns, yeah.
Exactly. But I think it was an honest attempt to try to do something, so. I haven't heard a second to the vote yet.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded that we rescind the letter of 7/24.
The motion, yeah.
Yep. To Chapley. Any further discussion?
No.
No.
Call for a vote. All in favor? All opposed? And I'm going to abstain.
So, Mr. Stanley, I knew that you're present, and you can consider the letter that the town gave you. Nolan Boyd, I will send an email to the Chapley Planning Board, but in my conversations with their administrator today, she said that you were going to be at the meeting for another reason anyways, and she wanted to hear it from you, so...
Okay. Now we're down to item E that we added, which is a resignation from Lois Mischu. That's the wishes of the board.
We accept Lois's resignation?
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to accept Lois's resignation from the warrant and finance committee. Any further discussion? All for a vote? All in favor? All opposed? Okay. Regrettably, we accept that.
So am I now advertising an alternate for two years?
You are.
You are.
Okay. Two weeks, same timeline?
Yes.
Yep. Yep. Something else is, if we're going to redo something with that ordinance, excuse me. What, I know the planning board has some pretty good wording in their ordinance under...
Are you talking about the warrant and finance?
Yeah, the warrant and finance one, but the planning board has wording in theirs, what happens when someone resigns. It's different than this.
Well, the planning board has bylaws. They don't have any ordinances. They have bylaws, and they really don't. I mean, the only thing in the planning board bylaws is how many members and the difference between the junior and senior alternate.
Okay.
And how they move up is similar. The only difference between the two is that they don't have this piece about the same expiration date.
Right.
But they still, they take the most senior member, and maybe that's a proposed change you want to make.
Right.
The most senior member on the planning board is moved up.
Moves up.
And you could do that with, with warrant and finance, if the voters so choose.
Yeah, to me, it's cleaner, better, it is...
So maybe after we fill these two positions...
Oh, yeah, we're not doing it right now.
Well, we can start sending it around to the committee, and, you know, you guys can start looking at it and see what changes you want to make.
Yep, because there's definitely a flaw in that, so...
Yeah, and there's a couple of other issues. I mean, throughout the years, this was done in 2011, and it was definitely done with good intentions. But there's a couple of other things in the beginning that Maine Municipal has recommended we kind of change or consider asking the voters to change, so we can put all that together.
Okay. Public comment?
Dennis Long, this liquor permit, is this going to be allowing alcohol on town property?
Yes.
Have we ever done that before?
We have no ordinance against it.
Well...
We just have policy in place.
You check with your liability insurance?
They provided their own liability insurance for the event.
On town property?
On town property.
Yep.
I think that's a sketchy thing myself, but the other thing is, with your assessments, what I would like is a written statement from the assessment of property that's in tree growth, property that's in resource protection, conservation land, and town-owned land.
Can you repeat that? Conservation?
Conservation, tree growth, resource protection, and town-owned land.
So am I understanding you correctly that you want a list of the properties in all four of those?
Yes, how many acres?
So based on policy, you need to come into the office during regular hours and fill out a freedom of information. I'm assuming you're not doing this for a committee, you're doing it for personal information?
Oh, I am doing it.
Okay. So if you want to just come in and fill out a freedom of information...
Wait a minute, did you just say you're doing it for a committee?
Yes.
Oh, you're doing it for a committee?
Yeah.
Which committee?
The Finance Committee.
Okay, so in that case, the chair needs to make the request. So, and this is, and this is a policy that the board can change in any way, but we go through this so that every member's not coming for different things. And we just, we went through this recently with the, remember the presentation that we did for the warrant and finance? Is it one member, is it all of it? So has the warrant and finance committee met? Have they taken a vote to request this information? And certainly, we'll get it to them ASAP.
No, they haven't met, and our chair resigned, so, but it's information that I want for the warrant and finance committee.
And you can totally have it either way. It's just a matter of how you want to handle it.
And also to do with the planning board. I want it for both.
Okay.
But, anyway.
So how does the boardwoman handle it?
I think we should stick to our policies.
But if the head...
There is no head.
Right, that's what I was going to say. So what are you doing those...
They'd have to meet.
All right.
So Dennis, do you mind just filling out a freedom of information form?
Just do it on your own. That'd be the cleanest and easiest.
And that way you can do whatever you want with the information and take it to whatever. I mean, you could anyways.
No, it's fine.
It's just a paper trail.
Yep.
I certainly will start gathering it. The auditor's here this week. I'll do my best to get it to you this week, but if you can just come in and sign off on the form.
Yeah, I'll Thursday probably when you're open.
So all properties in tree growth, you want just a listing of them, properties in tree growth, resource protection, conservation, and all Town of Acton-owned land?
Yeah, the total...
Listing a map and lots?
Yeah, the acreage.
You want acreage and assessment?
Yeah.
That might take me a...
No, no, that's fine. You know, if it takes you a couple of weeks, that's fine. You know, I mean, I'm not...
I'll fill the form out for you. Just sneak by and sign it so that the board stays on there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm back again. I apologize that I had to do it this way, but it's just the way I had to do it. Jen, you want to add me to the list for...
Jen, you want to add me to the list of the first moving to the other position? Also, I, I appreciate it all the time and stuff and effort that's been put on, and I agree with you, it, it just needs to be revamped. There's got to be a way around this not happening again, and that it could just, like, either senior members or alternate, you know, it, normally, it wouldn't have happened. It would have been, you would have had a two-year and a one-year. Like I said, for the last three years, I've been the one-year and haven't had many issues. And not that I want to live a lifetime on warrant and finance either, because I find out that's pretty tough at times, too. But it's, it's kind of a nice moving, and like I told somebody else, I'd flip a quarter with the other alternate, don't bother me at the time. I, you know, and I, like I said, I appreciate it. And I just wanted to let you all know that, you know, time spent is time earned. And then, our committee will meet again, the cemetery committee, in September, the last Thursday. We've had the, we've had the, with summer, well, we haven't had the summer off, but we haven't met during the summer. We've been out straight trying to do miscellaneous stuff. I've gotten several phone calls, thanks to Ms. Jen in her office. I've gotten several out of there, which is nice, because I've actually gotten four more volunteers out of that to take care of different things. So, it is progressing, it's just a very slow process. So, I'm hoping that with the other ones that are stepping forward, matter of fact, one person that stepped forward, she spends part-time here in the summer, the other part-time she's in, she's in another state, and she told me every time she comes home from now on, she's going to give me a call just to see what they can do. So, I thought this was great. And this is just a, you know, we're going, we're trucking along. Hopefully, we're, you know, it's not, it's low, everything's progressive. It's just slow getting there. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Boyant, this is warrant and finance stuff. So, there is a chair in the war, in the ordinance, and there's a vice chair in the ordinance. So, if we don't have a vice chair who can request this stuff in the absence of a chair, then...
I was vice chair.
There we go. Okay.
All right.
So, there's, there, there is no vice, vice chair.
She's no longer, she, yeah, she's not on the warrant and finance.
Yes, we have a problem.
It's complicated, one more step.
Regarding the terms, the way it was written is that as of any given town meeting, there are four members that have a one-year term remaining, who were presumably elected one year earlier. And three of them are standing members, and one is a alternate member. And also, there are four members who have, will have, two years remaining when they get elected during that town meeting. Three of them are standing members, one is an alternate member. So, at any given moment, you should have an alternate member that, for three standing members. The appointment process is meant to maintain that stuff. After the alternate member gets, moves up, we get an appointment, and the whole intent is to put as much as possible onto the legislative body, which is the people of the town, to elect people to the board, and only when it's really unavoidable do the selectmen get involved in appointments. So, I would say to you that if we have two alternate members with a two-year term, then something got munged up at some point in the past. It is not the ordinance, I believe you, and I'm certainly willing to go over it with anyone who would like, but I'm pretty sure the ordinance is written correctly, and it was just not followed correctly at some point in the past. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
And there's two openings, Paul. I said, there's two openings, Paul. No, two openings. Hint, hint. Hint, hint, hint. Okay. Any other, anybody else's public comment? Any more?